Good evening, 7:00 PM, January the 12th. This is our first regular council meeting of the new year. Happy New Year to everyone. Tonight's council members present, we have Councilman Morones, Councilman Gomez, Councilman Guerero, and Councilwoman Castillo. Mayor Dejada is absent due to his thunder ill in the hospital. We can please all people, keep him in our prayers. Tonight's invocation is be given by Pastor Gordon.
Would you bow with me, please? Father God, we're just so grateful as we come before your throne of grace and mercy, that indeed, we know as your children, we can have trust and confidence and peace that only you can give. Father, we urgently come before you to lift up the Dejada family, and ask you to be with not only the mayor, but with all of that family. Just give them peace, give them strength, give them courage, as they continue on. Father, we just ask your eternal blessing upon their dad who's passing from this life to the next, as he's on his final journey on this earth. Father, we're grateful that indeed we can find that strength through you. Father, we turn our attention to this world in which we live, and we're thankful, Father, for this freedom in which we enjoy discovery. We're thankful for the many women who keep us free, and ask you to be with them, be with all of their families as they're separated from them. Father, we'd ask you to be with our government, the national government, our local government. Father, we just ask that you would be with and bless not only the mayor, but all of the councilmen, councilwoman, city manager, and all the staff, who indeed are striving to do those things that would be of benefit to this community. And Father, we just ask that you would grant these many women strength, guidance, and wisdom to look out for the best interest of this community, to continue to lift this community up, to continue to trust in you, for the God who's the thinking, to be a representative, because we know, Father, that you set all governments in order. It's by your hand that it we're here today, it's by your grace that we're here today. Father, we're here at the right time, it's the right time to ordain for us. Father, we're thankful for that. We just ask you to continue to be with this city, such a beautiful blessed city, just continue to add us one of the great strengths that we need, community, trust one another. Father, we just ask that you bless this county and this city manager, who indeed know the weight that's upon their shoulders, and may they transfer that confidence and to this community, Jesus.
Counselor, you're leaving a package for business on eight, two minutes from December 15th, 2011 special meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes from December 15th, special meeting.
Motion made by Guerero, second by Castillo. Father, favor say aye.
Aye.
On the post, three. I was in here that I didn't read the document. Motion carries, three to zero, one. Second, five, B. Evaluate and approve the minutes from December 8th, 2011 regular meeting. You have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made by Guerero, second by Castillo. Father, favor say aye.
Aye.
On the post, three. Motion, here, three to zero, one. Acton Two, new business, item A, C and A, approved. The proclamation is to recognize January 23rd to January 27th, 2012, as Relay for Life Day in Florida. I believe we have some guest audience, Lori and Lori, do you want to like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the American Cancer Society, your Relay for Life, the caregivers and the over eleven million cancer survivors, we want to invite you and welcome you to three upcoming events. Our kickoff party will be January 24th at Event Center, this 30. We will have food, entertainment, and informational booths. We have lots of dedicated volunteers who will be there to answer any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Relay for the American Cancer Society. In conjunction with our kickoff, we also want to implement and start the first ever for this county Relay for Life, Paint the Town Purple. It's a first for our community, so we are so very excited, and we're asking local businesses and citizens to show their support by wearing purple, having purple ribbons, businesses displaying our flags, banners, and signage that we will provide. And lastly, we have our Relay for Life event May 5th in Hope, and we are asking the city to form a team to show us your dedication and the fight against cancer, and we want your support in helping to create a world with less cancer and more progress. Thank you so very much. On behalf of us, your team.
I would like to take part in last year's Relay for Life, and it was, it was an experience, and I'm glad to be able to do, contribute this year.
We're looking for your support again. Thank you, Lori, for being such a great leader in this endeavor, and we really need to thank you so much. We have all been touched by cancer. We all know somebody, a friend of a friend, a parent, a grandparent, it is unfortunately affects all of us, but the American Cancer Society does provide resources, and all the money raised at our Relay for Life events goes for research and resources and programs to help cancer survivors in their needs. So, thank you for clarifying the Paint the Town Purple. Yes. Thank you. We are passionate about purple, so we just might have to catch on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to read this proclamation here. Mayor proclaims January 23rd to 27th, 2012 Relay for Life days encourage residents and businesses to participate, whereas Relay for Life is a fun-filled overnight event designed to celebrate survivors and raise money to help the American Cancer Society save lives, help those who have been touched by cancer, and empower individuals to fight back, fight back against this disease. And whereas during the event, teams of people gather at the Polk High School track, take turns walking or running laps and enjoying music, entertainment, and food while building team spirit to help in the fight against cancer. And whereas Relay for Life is much more than a walk around the track, it's a time to celebrate life and hope, that brings numerous groups of individuals who are concerned about cancer together in an effort to fight back. And whereas highlighting the evening in the luminary ceremony, which takes place after dark, to honor cancer survivor, cancer survivors, and to remember those who have lost the battle against cancer. The luminary candles line the track and are left burning throughout the night to remind participants of the incredible importance of their contributors, and whereas the community who participates in Relay for Life fight back, because we know there is no finished line until we find a cure for cancer. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim that January 23rd to 27th, 2012 shall be observed as Relay for Life days in the town of Florisville, and encourage Florisville residents and business owners to help promote awareness of this event.
I approve that we approve of the proclamation to recognize January 23rd to 27th, 2012 as a Relay for Life day in Florisville.
Motion made by Castillo, second by Gomez, other favor say aye. Aye.
On the post, motion carries, four to zero. Moving on, item B, C and A, approve rezoning for residential to commercial at sixteen oh seven Plum Street.
Good evening, Council. Last night at the White Building meeting, they approved the rezoning of residential to commercial proposed to develop it at sixteen oh seven Plum Street at the ground. However, they're proposing contingent additional information that we needed, which is, there is a transmission line that's placed in his property, and there were setbacks that were not conform to our, to see with our policy. The transmission line, I wanted a verification, because it's all by CPS. I asked Mr. Brown if he could give us verification that he spoke to CPS to give us what the easement is in that area, and number two, what can be developed in that area. I did receive a fax from Barbara at CPS saying that it's an undefined easement at that location, but that their engineers verified that they can allow fifty feet to twenty-five on each side of that transmission pole for development. I went ahead and, with the site visit this morning, to verify if it goes with the site plan, I presented myself, and I have felt our consultant with me to help me measure. We did measure it, and it does come close to what it has in the site plan. We did make some adjustments with the site plan, so it can conform to the ordinance. I informed his contractor, Mr. Peoples, this afternoon. I do have a copy, if y'all wish to look at it, but it will be, it will conform to what our ordinance requires.
Any discussion, Council?
Yes, I'll ask a question, Cindy. Is this particular area's zone commercial or residential today?
It's res- residential.
And you're applying to be zoned. Okay, so, have we talked to the residents of the area?
They were sent out notices for the public hearings. We did send out letters and post them in paper. We did have one letter that came in in opposition of it, and they did have a public hearing, we did have a person who did spell that out.
Was there a reason why they had posted?
I have a letter of a person, if you'd like for me to read it?
Sure.
So, tell us what type of business it is.
They want to propose thirteen cabins lodges similar to the one that the places are attached to.
Would you like for me to read our back? Or you'd like to read?
No, I think, um...
I can see.
How many signatures are okay with it?
There were no signatures petition for this.
So, we've got the laundry, like, two hundred feet over on the area?
We did do the boundaries at the two hundred feet, so, and we've sent notices to all the property owners for the better.
So, that's, is that adjacent to the highway? Do you want it, or is it on the opposite side?
It's at the intersection of Brown Lane, outside.
Oh, exactly, it is, okay.
Cindy, how, I know that this year, we said that we were going to, it's one of, we have an object, many objectives for this year, and one of them is to look at our zoning plan for the whole city, because we do have residential areas where commercial businesses are probably not nearby. And at some point, we need to, say, have a zoning plan, which we do not have, is that correct? If we have a zoning plan today, is that going to be something planned today?
No, it's something that we're working on, and the timeframe is...
I spoke with the engineers, and we're looking at getting a luminary, so, questions if that's a case. We're also looking at having two public hearings, that we're looking to go over, but then looking at doing for our planning system. We're hoping to do that in January, beginning in February, so we're looking at...
You know, in all fairness, though, spot zoning has been going in our city for years, and I always question what, what spot zoning consists of. And residential areas are being transformed into commercial. What happens there is there's no real provision or obvious procedure to keep that from happening. And if you're gonna stop spot zoning, you're gonna have to stop everyone from spot zoning. For instance, let me give you an example. There are some shop owners in the middle of town. Those are homes, at one time, transformed into shelters. It's never stopped anyone from doing that. So, in my, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Brown, you know, it's a business, you know, unfortunately, there's no real rule, so, you know, as, as long as there was no rule to this point, I don't see why you can't go on with what you need to do. And I applaud you for starting business.
And I think, I think just across the street from you, I think they have that hay pulling business there, and there's always traffic, big trucks coming in and out, so, it's not like, there's not a business already there.
Cindy, is there, like, how many, what size of the area? One of the things that concerns me, because if I lived in the area, I would want to know how large is this place, is it an acre, is it two acres? How many, these are lodges that are going on, and how far apart are they, are they, if, if the property being set is a lot, you know, seventy-five by a hundred, is that the rule you're using, or what are the guidelines for this?
And I understand your, I understand your concern. The seventy-five by a hundred is for single-family buildings, because of that. What he's trying to build out there are, there are cabins that are twenty-six, Mr. Brown, twenty-six by...
Forty.
Twenty-six by forty, with ten feet space each way. His lot is about one sixty, one sixty by, one sixty by one hundred ninety-one feet. So, when I went out there, my main concern was, is he gonna have the, the entrance and the exit for emergency vehicles? He does meet that. He does meet, he explained with you all the asphalt that you fire at their, at their place as well, there's some adjustments he's gonna have to do, like put the culvert on the brown lane inside, so he's gonna have to do that. Being that it's a commercial business, he won't meet the requirements, that he can't establish these.
And as long as he follows the impact fees, the schedules of the fees and everything else, we're fine. The most important part is the safety part, so make sure that we do have that room. If we don't have that room, make sure it comes back to us, Cindy. Make sure that someone's out there surveying it, or whatever it is it could be doing.
And, and that's one of what I went out this morning to check on, the site plan, he hasn't made adjustments, because he was only at fifteen feet from the property line in front, we have to make sure he's...
Is there, is, when someone comes to, do they present a plan as to where each structure is going to get placed, and how much room is left? I mean, do we go through that process, or would you say, you know, it's okay?
Do you have illustrations on how buildings are gonna be placed?
I, I, he proposed for the site plan, I was psyched it would be in the beach, and I wanted more verification, so I, this morning, I was just like...
So, how are they gonna be facing?
But is it on paper, is it on paper? Is it from the neighborhood? Is it published?
And just remind ourselves that P and D actually sent it through.
Well, typically, P and D approves these things, which is why I have all the questions, and...
And, and I understand that, and then again, I wanna emphasize again that this is just for the rezoning process, when it gets down to the civil, civil plans, if they might, in our department, in the building, in the building department, we make sure that people follow, that they have the right water, and the right sewer, the right concrete, asphalt, everything that goes for the civil work.
Is there anything in the building that's that? Is there combination time factors, the ones that's approved, or we have nothing to do with that, it's only the zoning?
Yes.
So, the planning and zoning script and see, if they had, what was it, they were looking for? I mean, they passed it, and, and I have a problem, I usually go with the recommendation of the planning and zoning, but the little detail you said was, what was it?
Was it transition line and setbacks?
So, that order, and write it in paper?
Yes. Well, is it possible to send it back to the planning and zoning? I mean, since this is their, part of their responsibility?
To me, that's what I would, I would kind of recommend, I mean, I'm, I'm forty, I don't have nothing against it, but just to make sure that they got what they...
Because I think we're setting precedents here. If typically they approve it, and now we're being given one thing to approve, then what's gonna happen with the others that come up?
Actually, they've come up plenty of times since oh six. This has been an ongoing procedure that's failed, and you're gonna keep getting them. And the reason that is, is because planning and zoning don't wanna make that decision.
But they have to bend them.
So, they go in, and I understand that. The, the main, the main, the main focus of this, if you want to start a business, and they, it's a commercial piece of land, is that correct?
It's a commercial, it's a residential.
It becoming, they're willing, they're gonna make, make it a commercial, isn't the P and D working on it. Their main focus is to make sure that it's, first of all, safe enough, second, that it can be built there, and it has to follow protocol, correct? Third, that we bypass every other, if you, if, everything you've mentioned, it has to bypass that, and pass that. If it doesn't, then we have an issue. And that's where, if you go through the process, it's gonna have to go back to P and D anyway. So, it's here, you know, and, and we're looking at it, and if it does not, and it fails the protocol, then it doesn't get done, all right?
And that's why I was referring to the site to be, so they can follow up on it.
Cindy, we've been discussing this here for over ninety days now, and we've had all the requirements that they asked us to, and as far as the, the fire, turn around, go back out, and we saw, this, this, we've had all the requirements that were, that were asked by the officials and the board members. So, if any more delay, well, that would keep, leave for making any more, any money on it, so, time is money.
Mr. Brown, I apologize, but it's not, you're, when they're, that's not the issue, the issue is the putting a commercial in a residential area.
Well, this is commercial, right, all around me.
No.
Right, Maho Community, Spooky, all alone, everybody around me is commercial, and eight acres behind me, that blocks to me, so, I don't see what the problem is, the human resource in that building.
Sherry, the, I don't know, do you know where the location is?
Yes, I do, very clearly.
Okay, because I, I go by there, and I, I personally don't see where it would be addressed to anyone, the location, because it's right next to the location that's right by the highway. It's always on the way out, so obviously, where it would be addressed to anyone.
Mr. Brown, what, what's right behind your home? What, what, what big industry is right behind your home?
There's the, I have the eight acres, and behind that, they are in fact, the...
That's right, that's right. It's been there for, it's right in the center of town.
Exactly.
It's a big business, what, I mean, what can I tell you? I mean... The thing that, you know, and, and we have it right in the center of town here, we have cabins right in town, right across from the pizza parlor.
So, do we have a motion?
Your recommendation, Cindy, everything's fine, or your, your recommendation?
Yes, it, it does conform, it does conform with our, with our vote.
And if it does not, and it comes, that's right.
He still needs to come in and give us engineer experience class, engineer and architect, he still...
So, the only thing that's been approved is just changing from the rezoning, residential or commercial, nothing else.
And then the planning and zoning passed to you that night, which is where the director would...
I'm going to vote to approve the rezoning, residential, we said residential, R one, the commercial at sixteen oh seven Plum Street. That's settled.
Motion by Gomez, second by Guerero, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the post, motion carries, three to one. Item three, discussion, update on the city cemetery, Mr. Roberto Russell.
You know, I got dispatched to Herriage, or what is it down here? I had a rate, it's not even, you know, like, I'm glad to have a new year, a new year to everybody. I was cursed by a, a, a Saturday meeting, during the, my, my wife sat by next to the mayor's mother all year, and that was just, because, something was written about shaking some of the mayor's family, what happened?
His father, his father is ill.
How was that?
His father, his father is ill. His father, his father is you.
I, you know, I haven't had an actual life, who is that lady, I don't know, but anyway, I thought one of the neatest things we got, I had a guardian got four of these flags, and, uh, we got this certificate, uh, with this one, and I don't know, some people left it in the... We raised the flag of United States of America, and this is to certify that the company's flag was blown over the United States Capitol on December of nine, twenty-eleven. At the crest of the Honorable Henry Clay, uh, Member of Congress, this flag was blown over four millimeters of restoration, so... And I don't care what your political situation is, I thought it would be, for us in the city, and, uh, all the ways, I know we got the one tiger flag out of the cemetery, I'd like to see maybe African American Cemetery and, and maybe one behind the Autobots, but we, we just got the flag itself, so... Still, we, we got a meeting next week, meeting is, uh, the invitation for all the new partners, uh...
Mr. Russell, how large are those flags?
What's that?
The flag shop?
It's three feet, it's, uh, three feet and five.
So you need holes for them?
What's that?
You need the holes, the metal holes?
Yeah, really, it's, it's like, uh, uh, there's a walker's, I don't know, there's individuals, gotta get your info on the thing.
Are you the one having that meeting at Jack's? Is there a reading coming on?
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, 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 let's see, now, here's the city cemetery, yeah, right now, here's across the state, this one over here is by the civic center, that's where they buried the Indian bones that were found, uh, during the, uh, you know, construction of the civic center. And back over here is, uh, San, oh, wait a second, yeah, I thought of the cemetery, and that was the one I had mentioned before, was about twenty yards wide, about a hundred yards deep, and I walked down to that, it's all Hispanic, and there's the river, and I thought, well, you know, I worked with it here a while, I live on the other side of the river, you know, I gotta find that, that's where I live, I mean, just like that, but what the interesting deal is, and you know, it needs a lot of attention, and, uh, hopefully we can get Boy Scouts, schools, or whoever to help with, and we need churches, and then we go over here to, uh, oh, yeah, the Panera Cemetery, and the African American Cemetery, and the other, uh, African American Cemetery, and the Walker Cemetery, right behind H U D, just like to go there to pick up a, um, a prescription down that hill, that, that was, I believe one of them was effective, but, but, we'll discuss it more in a minute. And I thought the most interesting one, one of the guys who works for the city is the same, those such as, and by, and that's over here on this, uh, Second Street, uh, right over there, yeah, maybe Second Street, why, it's hard to find, but it's at the, if you were at the county church and you were going north, west, right to the left there, you get, you know, it's, well, it's like graffiti, so it's a, it's a fence, and so I got out and looked through that, sure enough, there's some, there's some grave sites in there. Now, I, I assume this is city property, we'd have to check it out, that's not real high priority, but if I have relatives buried in a place like that, it is a high fence and the whole thing's full of junk, you know, I think if we can get churches involved and others involved, I think that would get us a return. And obviously, the highest percentage we need is, uh, is public community, I believe there's a church, uh, even now, a post office, I think there's one, and others, but, it's, I'm gonna try to make as many churches as I can, churches as I can, but I'll, I'll need help on this, I can't, I can't do this on myself. Uh, let's see, the, uh, I talked to the, uh, county agent, didn't say no, and he said there's gold, quick way to get those gophers out, and, uh, I talked to, uh, a couple of agents ago, and pretty much, uh, tracks flies, the island is appointed, you know, that goes in there, you get four pellets down, the gopher, well, we got lots of gophers, this is, this is the time of year that gophers have a lot of fun, holler at gold, when that sun comes out there, all the places, and I made that, that, should be, uh, the, uh, we talked, uh, probably at the last meeting about when the, when the red aids and the firing is coming out like March or something, that we could go out and have a professional picture of that, and I recommend, uh, you know, check around, we got a little, a little proceeding, and probably possibly a year or so, I should... Our meeting is Thursday the nineteenth, that's, that's one o'clock to...
I'm sorry.
Uh, eleven thirty to one, the business department will, will start at, uh, twelve, and it will stop, probably, uh, now, I reminded you, it's just one and a half months till our main, uh, celebration out of city cemetery, that's the, uh, the one celebration, and that's why we moved to high school for...
I have a question, Mr. Johnson, do you, do you get him his resources for the, uh, some water resources for, I think, the one behind Autozone, is that correct? Hosees or something like that, what do you need, the weed feeder?
We're, we're in with a water company, and, uh, a water group at this point, a company that's, uh, so we can start thinking, and bring it up, move to right to that, that is, that if you, if all people are really with the summer, it's, uh... Well, you know, the last word, uh, a lot depends on, uh, a lot of the sales section, I don't think, uh, a lot of that, and we don't have a lot more to think about, but, yeah, if, uh, we can do that, uh, that's why anything would be a good, or schedule right, you know, give us a, we had twenty thousand in our budget, and, uh, had much better than that, especially...
There's a church group you want to get right there, wondering if you want some help?
Thank you very much, Mr. Russell.
Sorry about that.
Do you have any citizens, please? Moving on to Friday meeting, employee of the month?
Mayor, anything that says, fine, I want there, if it's okay, we, we, uh, we'll handle it.
We have our employee of the month this year, so this month is, um, actually Johnny, if I can have you come up, Johnny Green, is our employee of the month this month, he works on our water department, um, he's been with us since March of two thousand and eight, he has taken his test to get his license, you know, a D license currently, he's got his D license, he's working with his continuing education and training to receive his D license. Uh, one of the things that we're giving it to him for, for the month of December, you know, the holidays, a lot of people like to take off, Johnny covered a lot of those guys' call times, so they make it spend time with their family, he's always available, he's the first one to be there, he asks me to do something, he does it very passionately, and he's also one of the public, so we just wanna say congratulations, Johnny. Thank you for all the work. Thank you. Can you do a thank you?
First, congratulations, moving on to I M C, the city revenues contract.
Yeah, I know we talked a lot about the revenues contract, we've done a lot of research, I've been out on a long side, we've got to go into the landfill and recycle plant, and all kinds of fun stuff to get more personal, we are coming up on our date to renew our contract, um, it's the, in the April, beginning of March is when we have to have our notice out. What I would like to do is create an RSQ, which is a request for qualifications, and send it out, um, beginning of February, and we'll go ahead and send one out, I guess I at that time as well, to let them know, put them on notice, that we are looking at other contracts, and trying to find a better solution. We've had some things come up that we've been dealing with, um, as far as other companies, we're gonna send it out, we're gonna try to come up with a better solution than we currently have, and we're going the request for qualifications route, because what we can do is like we do with our engineers and some of the other things you've seen us do lately, we can get multiple companies and then sit down and we can work on our rate from there. If we go strictly to proposals, then generally the lowest one goes, and we may not get as good a service as if we do the qualification. Um, I will be working with that, I will get a copy out to everybody so that we can see it, it should be hopefully at our January meeting, that way, early February, we can post it and start getting some contracts up on that, so we can make a decision, um, and have everything in place and ready to go, so it will be a smooth transition if we decide to change, um, carriers or companies. Um, I am still working with Johnny on his idea of starting our own trash company, it will be part of the request for qualification, it will give us the leeway that we decide to purchase our own trash truck, that will be written in the contract, if we have the ability to do that, um, to start maybe doing certain areas of residential, maybe picking up an additional date, um, during the month for those residents, it is gonna need to be written in the contract, if that is an option for us, so we are still definitely working on that. Any questions?
Any other questions, counsel?
No, thanks, that's, that's great. Um, if that does come tonight, uh, I would like to see, um, all the companies come and give us a, uh, a pretty much presentation.
We can definitely do that, the RSQ, uh, will go out, um, and you usually have its ten days, I think. And during the time when those contracts come in, um, I'll contact them, sit down, make sure everybody has copies of them, and then we'll set them up, hopefully, um, that you write, we'll start talking more.
And the more the mayor, the more the mayor don't even know it's going on there.
Absolutely, our trash service will end in September, um, so we definitely have time to work on it, but the more quickly we get things in place, then we'll be more settled for a transition that is...
Thank you, Sharon. I am deep, city streets, uh, in the house of, you know?
Yeah, I put this on the agenda, because some of the city businesses downtown have phoned me and, and requesting that we put some type of signage up downtown, I don't even think we have a sign that, that tells people where even City Hall is, or where the post office is, and I know we have certain restaurants at different locations, so I think we feel, I feel we need to talk to some of these businesses and get their opinions as far as what type of signs they would like, and then also we need to, uh, sit down and see what it would cost to do this, uh, I think having them screw up the downtown area, we have visitors, they know where, where things are located, you know, antique shops and so forth, uh, and I know Stephanie, I had talked to Stephanie from, uh, Chicken Group, and she thought she might be able to make it, and I don't see she, she not there, so, uh, anyway, uh, we'll be talking to more businesses downtown and, and get their suggestions, and see what, what type of signs they might wanna put up, and whether it's something that we can do, or whether they, you know, pay the part they could do, and put up with the signs or what, but it's something that I think we should, we should, we should do.
By the way, on that note, I'll tell you what, aren't we supposed to, are we looking with the state of the highways, this, the state of Texas, to get certain, um, things done out on the highway?
Taking down signs for the school, yeah.
No, no, I mean, for the, um, like for, no, no, for entries, like at the Y, what was I telling you about, what were you telling me about?
The Texas authorities come to us, they've got some additional, um, they're moving in, and what their, uh, providing is land taken, they're gonna be land taken at the Y at the beginning of town, or one of you on the loop, they're gonna do some additional land taken around the Fourville sign right there at the four corners where H U D is, um, just to start up, and also in front of the roadside inn and, um, the apartments that are there, they're gonna do it there.
Okay, do me a favor, you can look into, see, you know how they have the mall, in the mall, they come out and give you the sign, you can stop and you can read through and see that, you know what I'm saying? Give you the, the, right, give you some type of, of idea of where you go, or how to navigate the mall, see if you can find a way, if they can, maybe, well, that would be, see if there would be some, yeah? Check, check, see that, maybe we can set that in the chamber, or right, if you come into town, or even in town, see if they can, uh, maybe, if, if, then this one, or maybe we can fit it in the building, you know?
Just one of the other things that I wanted to add, we did submit a letter of request for a traffic, uh, at night seven, one in the morning, if they received that, they did respond, and they're going to, uh, something, they're submitting a request, okay?
They're working.
Also, we texted, and they've been accepting it up.
And that will knock out John's, uh, speed tag, so that'll be good.
I'll, I'll see what kind of research I can find, as far as the cost and different ideas that we got on it, I don't know that that's something that Text, like, Textop would actually do, um, but we may be able to purchase it, or go in partnership with a jam or something like that to purchase it, um, but we would just have to get permission from Textop to put it up on the, the highway, and now that we're on the next, uh, did they ever get back a bit on the schedule, that we're going to do in the season, on...
They're still working on it, they did meet, uh, just a little during the years, and so, they've been, uh, pretty much, uh, talking to them on a weekly basis, just to see what's going on, how to increase traffic, and so...
On city streets, and one more time, and then I brought up, uh, the, uh, traffic on, by the school, we talked about linking lines, uh, the fact that we could put a speed limit that'll let you know how fast you're going, how's that coming around, by the way?
We did, uh, council there approved, uh, a reservation for them to remove the material that, uh, did, was, was, uh, over there, we were, and talked with them about positive vision that, to that area, so...
Alright.
Last time, I'm gonna generalize me, is, uh, human resource?
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick update on human resources one more time, I'm gonna be meeting, um, Council of Sales over, I've done some of that, some work on, um, salary pre-asked, I've got, uh, a couple of, uh, phones over the baseball park, where some changes are taking place, um, I'm ready to move, um, and sit with them, so that we can go down over a list of things that I've worked on, some of my ideas, kind of run them by them, make sure that it goes along with the objectives, um, that was done down there, hopefully we'll be able to get this done, so that we can do some type of presentation on the second January, and then probably by the end of February, if we are ready to, um, start moving, as soon as we can.
That, that's including some of the other, um, jobs coming up, correct?
Yes.
You know what, that's been a good meeting, great, 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 that's how we go forward.
Yeah, and if any of you, um, I thought, uh, any of you were sharing, but any of the rest of you would like to come and take a look, or if you're more than welcome, and I'll go over the individual, if you have any questions. Thank you for working so hard on that, and being ahead of schedule.
For the business meeting, it's adjourned at seven forty-eight.